...again, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any no's, any abstentions, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are into our last item, which will be Occupy Sacramento and West Sacramento update. So before we get started, I'm gonna have Vice Mayor Bonnie explain the rules on the hands. Okay, everybody listen up, please.
Instead of clapping, we're gonna wave our hands. Everyone, okay?
Mayor, we got it.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Um, so we have about forty members who've signed up to speak. Um, we're gonna ask that after the chief goes, we're gonna allow, um, two minutes for the first twenty minutes, uh, speakers, and then after that, we'll bump it down to one, and we'll make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. We just ask you to be mindful of everybody else speaking. Um, again, if you wanna applaud, you know, hands or some other show other than applauding would be helpful, and we wanna make sure we hear as many people, uh, as possible. This is a very important issue for our community. Chief?
Mayor, members of the Council, we're with your police chief. Um, I'm gonna give you kind of a summary, um, a high-level summary on what's, what's happened. Um, and then once I'm done, I believe the city attorney's gonna kind of brief you on a couple of legal issues in the process. Uh, first, let me describe how we, we handle protests. Early, early on in the budget cycle, we talked about with the election year coming up, we'd see a lot of protests, and, and we handle them very similarly and have for years. Um, our goal in this is to ensure that folks have, and have the free ability to exercise their First Amendment rights, as well as protecting the rights of others while protecting people and property. One of the things we do here in Sacramento, with Sacramento Police Department, is, is soon as we find out that we're going to have a protest or demonstration, is work with those who are organizers or leaders of those groups to identify what their issues or concerns are and help facilitate whatever protests they might have. Um, I won't go into a lot of detail about the Occupy movement. Um, it's, it's in the media and has been in the media since September, when it started in, in New York. Um, but what I do wanna emphasize is Sacramento is very unique. We're not like any of the other cities, um, not only in, in the regulations and laws that we have, but also how we enforce those laws. As it relates to Sacramento in particular, we learned, first learned that Occupy Sacramento would start around October 6th. At that time, we started meeting with folks to, uh, folks who identified themselves as protesters, and we started discussing some of the options, some of the, um, locations, and what permits were required um, for, um, being in parks. On the 6th, we had about two-hundred-and-fifty people come down to Sacramento and start the protests, including marches, they went to different businesses, and to the federal courthouse. Uh, that group, that day, kind of used Chavez Plaza as the rally point. While we were working with the group and, and the demonstration, the issues and facilitating their safe movement around the city, uh, there was a legal effort to block any enforcement of, of regulations, in particular, the camping ordinance. That, um, was defended by the city attorney's office, and that, that motion basically was denied. So between October 6th and today, we've averaged on a daily basis between forty and three-hundred-and-fifty protesters. Uh, we facilitated marches and rallies throughout this core downtown area. Um, Chavez Plaza continues to be the rally point, as, as everyone knows. Um, one of the things that's important to recognize is Chavez Plaza is posted to be closed between dusk and dawn. We've basically used the city code, uh, and allowed those in the park during midweek to remain until eleven PM, and on the weekends, remain until midnight. That'd be Friday and Saturday nights, defined as weekends. We've let every evening the protesters know that the park is closed, what hours are going to be closed, and then given dispersal orders each, each night, notifying them that the park is closed. Anyone remaining in the park would be arrested. Um, the majority of folks who were in the park at those times leave the park and continue their protests on the sidewalks. And to date, we've arrested fifty-seven, uh, we've made fifty-seven arrests. Of that, thirteen individuals have been arrested more than once. Some illegal considerations, um, on that. There's two sections of the city code that kind of relate to this. The first is twelve-point-five-two, that's, that involves our camping ordinance. The second is twelve-point-seven-two, which is the use of parks. Um, it's important to know the distinction between the two, because I think the camping ordinance kind of gets confused with what the park use is. They're two different, completely different ordinances and sections. The camping ordinance, I'll talk about that first. Um, there's been a lot of requests from the public, and the council is very aware that the council doesn't give exemptions or issue permits, you know, elected body. Those, the issue permits that you're aware of, and I'm trying to help educate the community, is that different permits require different city staff to either issue them or give exemptions to them, not the city council. When it comes to camping, the city manager has the authority to issue a temporary, uh, camping ordinance in connection with a special event, and that's one of the keys of special event, but that falls on the city manager. The park use has two, two components to it. First is the use of the park, and the appropriate uses of the park, and the second is the hours. Uh, the parks director is responsible for issuing permits on use, and we see those a lot in the city of Sacramento. The parks director is also, uh, the permittee on the extension of hours with concurrence of the police chief. Um, as of today, there's been no request or nor submission of a, of a permit for use of the park or extension of hours for the park. Um, and with that, I kind of, um, would like the city attorney to kind of talk about some of the First Amendment issues that, that were discussed in the legal action on the 6th, if I may.
Yes, thank you, chief, and, um, mayor and, and council members. Uh, one issue that has been raised repeatedly, um, regarding the actions that have been taken over at Caesar Chavez Plaza, is that, um, it's been alleged that the city has been infringing upon the freedoms of speech and assembly by the individuals who are over there exercising those rights. And, um, while those rights are, uh, protected greatly by the law, and I think honored, um, by this city, um, through its police department and, um, its conduct, that it's not an unfettered right, and there is longstanding jurisprudence that does permit government, and in this case, the city, to adopt ordinances that may tend to infringe upon the, the rights of, uh, to assemble and speech, incidentally, associated with the city's exercise of its police power. And so the city is entitled, under the law, to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions upon the use of its parks and other public facilities. And so Chapters twelve-point-seven-two, which is the, the park ordinance that sets the eleven PM deadline, is one such reasonable time, place, and manner restriction that the city imposes upon the use of the park. And the illegal camping ordinance, uh, under Chapter twelve-point-five-two is another such ordinance. And, um, we believe that both of those ordinances are lawful. They were adopted by this council pursuant to vigorous vetting and much, much discussion to make certain that they were lawful. And, um, the judge on the 6th of October, in the hearing on, uh, this matter, um, agreed that no temporary restraining order should be issued to prevent the city from exercising its rights to, um, I guess, use those time, place, and manner restrictions for the protection of the general public.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the presentation. You want questions now or after a public testimony?
Uh, we'll go after a public testimony. All right, again, we're gonna remind everyone, please hold your applauses. If you want to show expression by hands, great. Uh, we have forty folks who signed up. We're gonna do the first twenty minutes, uh, for two minutes, and then we'll reevaluate it at that point.
Okay, I'll call three at a time, so people are prepared. The first is Matt Joy, followed by Jenny Bari, and then Ralph Hickman. Who's Matt here?
Good evening, council members, mayor. Um, my name is Matt Joy, I'm in District Three, uh, and I'm here to speak in support of an exception to camping ordinance on First Amendment grounds. I think it makes us a unique case. Uh, I don't think there's a risk of spillover, I don't think there's a risk of other groups coming forward and needing to get exceptions, uh, but this is a case of people demonstrating their First Amendment right to assemble and peaceably discuss the issues that face them, and address grievances that they have with their government, with the way that, uh, they are being economically, uh, limited and marginalized in this system. Uh, and, I mean, I, I watched the council meeting from last week, and I watched, uh, Councilmember Fong talk about, uh, when you were talking about the water infrastructure, how it was really sad that there weren't a big group of people like this, uh, here to talk about and participate in that discussion. Uh, those peoples are located now right across the street. Uh, they are interested in becoming part of this political process. In fact, they are interested in, in shaping the political process. Uh, and, and that's, I think, the exact kind of thing that needs to be engaged. As Councilmember Ashby said, uh, this is about political engagement. These are people who are standing up because they're very interested in seeing things change, and specifically seeing things change when large banks get trillions of dollars, and we're not sure if we have enough money for a bridge or water improvements that are gonna be critical not only for our generation, but for generations down the line. That's a problem, and that's a problem that has to be addressed. Uh, these people are demonstrating because they want, uh, and believe that we can do better as a society, that we are in a technological age now where we can engage in direct democracy, and that those rights of assembly and freedom of speech should not be abridged, especially when now is such a critical time, and there is so much to be discussed. We're talking about water infrastructure that is, that is, is losing its effectiveness, and is a gift that was handed to us by generations past who engaged in the democratic process that gave us that gift. We owe at least that much to be able to have the kinds of discussions that will allow for that process to continue in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, mayor.
Jenny?
We have Jenny, thank you.
And then Ralph, and following Ralph will be Sean Thompson.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Jenny Bari, I live in District Four with my husband. I'm just gonna go ahead and talk a little bit about law. Uh, our Bill of Rights, the First Amendment, is in the Bill of Rights. Let me read that to you. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the assemble, of the peaceful assemble, the people peacefully to assemble, and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Originally, the First Amendment applied only to the laws enacted in Congress. However, starting with Gitlow versus New York, if you wanna take that down, in nineteen-twenty-five, the Supreme Court held that the fir, that this also applies to the First Amendment to each state, including local government. Adlerley versus Florida, nineteen-sixty-six, was a case in the Supreme Court of the United States over whether arrests from protest, protesting in front of a jail were constitutional. Justice Douglas authored that public officials should not, according to the vision of the First Amendment, be given discretion to decide where public places can be used for the expression of ideas. And Hague versus CIO, CIO, in nineteen-thirty-nine, this was another Supreme Court case over whether an ordinance requiring a permit for public assembly or in upon the public streets, highways, public parks, or public buildings of the city is void on its face. Justice Roberts stated, "Whenever the title of streets and parks may rest, they have immemorially been held in trust for the use of the public, and time out of mind have been used for purposes of assembly, communicating through thoughts, thoughts between citizens, and discussing public questions." I personally am being discriminated by the park being closed. My husband works till eleven PM at night. We spend our evening hours and our early morning hours together, which we cannot do at the park, because they are not there during those times because of your ordinance, which is unconstitutional, and it also has been overridden in two thousand and nine in Texas. And I'd be happy to send that case code to the city attorney if they like.
Thanks, Jenny.
Ralph?
All right, appreciate everybody being mindful of the two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for allowing me to speak. Uh, I'm not eloquent or anything, so I'll just get right to it. You know, all of you were elected by us, and we have rights, and you made promises, okay? You promised to uphold the Constitution, and you're not doing it. You're violating our rights to peaceful assembly. You have police that are closing parks that belong to us. You know, we have this right, that you guys are actually, you know, I, I guess I'm repeating myself. You're, you're violating it. You know, what are you afraid of? If you're that afraid of change, then keep your promises to us. Promise to uphold the law, promise to uphold the Constitution. Keep your promises, or we'll elect you out, we elected you in. You know, if the word recall, if it means anything to you, please, think about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Sean Thompson, and then David Whitkin, and then Patrick O'Kane.
Excuse me. All right, well, most of my speech was actually, uh, covered pretty well by the officer over here who spoke first, so I'm gonna speak a little bit more from the heart. Uh, when we came together, we had a lot of different issues that we all kind of agreed on or disagreed on, but we all felt there were still serious issues in this country. And the time that we spent together over the last couple of weeks, we've come up with a lot of ideas for solutions and, uh, potential that worked within the means of the law that we could do to help a lot of people and solve these issues. And, uh, you are the people here who have the power to help us do that, and that's why we're trying to work with you here. Um, homelessness, joblessness, underemployment, that's a huge one. Uh, we've been helping families, uh, working with families, hearing about families' problems. Also, same with students, teachers, police, and other union workers. Um, all these problems, we're really working hard and diligently to come up with solutions. We've been, uh, spending all day, every day, uh, maybe hundreds of us every day, trying to come up with new ideas and to talk to the people of the community and hear what they have to say. We have general assemblies that we do several times a day, where we let everybody speak, excuse me, and we let everybody raise their hand to a vote to decide what solutions we're gonna try to take, or in which ways we're gonna move forward. Um, I have dozens of people come up to me personally every day, and they tell me, "You guys are doing a really great job, we really appreciate what you're doing. This is really big for the people." And, uh, with that, I mean, I don't see why we should be held back, why should we, we should be restricted by six hours a night. It takes us almost three hours every morning to set up everything that we have to, uh, get, get our tents up, not tents for camping, tents for holding our supplies, tents for, um, a one late, large tent where we set up our internet database, it's called a media tent. Um, it takes us several hours in the night to tear everything down and be sure that we're out by eleven o'clock before the police come and kick us out, arrest us, and take all our supplies away. Um, with that, I mean, I, all I have to finish up is, uh, whatever the real problem is you guys have with us being there between eleven and five every day, if it's finances, I've personally worked with a few people in our group to crunch the numbers, and it's really not financially bad. It's financially helpful to the community for us to be there, even for us to be there overnight.
Sean, we need your final thought, please.
I'm sorry?
We need your final thought, please.
Uh, yeah, the final thought, that would be, as much good as we've done, um, I would have expected most of you to be out there to talk with us, or at least to meet attention we've had, for you guys to come out, and not so much for you, mayor, to speak out against us. Um, I'm embarrassed for you in that manner.
David Whitkin, and then Patrick O'Kane, and then Arda Rashid.
This is a fundamental constitutional issue. In Miranda versus Arizona, the Supreme Court determined that where rights secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rulemaking or legislation which would abrogate them. Marbury versus Madison states that all laws which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void. In Norton versus Shelby County, it is noted that an unconstitutional act is not law, it confers no rights, it imposes no duties, affords no protection, it creates no office, and it is, in its legal contemplation, as inoperative, as though it had never been passed. In March of this year, the Supreme Court reiterated that speech on matters of public concern is at the heart of the First Amendment's protection. The First Amendment reflects a profound national commitment to the principle that we, that debate on public issue should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, because speech concerning public affairs is more than self-expression, it is the essence of self-government. Speech deals with matters of public concern where it can be fairly considered as relating as to any matter of political, social, or other concern to the community, and this is clearly a public issue, as you can see. And, and in regard to the city manager's comments about, um, matter, manner, time restrictions, the Supreme Court in this, uh, decision this year emphasized specifically that those are intended for private issues, not public issues. Public concerns have the utmost Supreme Court protection. The, the First Amendment is protected, and neither of these is to the fullest degree. Thus, this applies to this assembly, your ordinance is an unconstitutional nullity. We are not here to request that you allow, or to request that you allow us to exercise our constitutional right. We are here to inform you of what your constituents require of you. We demand that we stop being arrested for exercising our constitutionally-recognized freedoms. We demand that the members of this city council operate in the representative capacity it was intended to, rather than the administrative capacity in which it currently operates. You have a fiduciary duty to these people, your only legitimate constituency. Attempting to categor, and you have, and you have failed to faithfully discharge your duties. Attempting to categorize this peaceable assembly as anything but for the purposes of circumventing legitimate political process, and adjudicating against them is at best disingenuous, at worst treasonous. William Pitt once said, "Necessity is the plea for every infringement on human li, liberty. It is the argument of tyrants, it is the creed of slaves." I am positive the creed of this great country is not slavery. Therefore, members of the city council, what is your argument? That it is necessary to infringe on this assembly's constitutionally-protected human liberties to enforce an unlawfully-applied statute? If so, that is not only tyranny, but also treason. Councilwoman, yes, I'm wrapping it up. Councilwoman Askey, you told me you're a patriot, a sentiment that I'm sure that your colleagues in the city council also share. I challenge this council to prove to the American people that they are patriots rather than corporate bureaucrat marionettes. These people are patriots. This is how the political process works in this country. Illustrate your patriotism by standing with your nation in protest of these injustices. Show, support and join the people, for you are also members of the ninety-nine percent. Show, show the world that Sacramento politicians lead by example and support the Constitution of the United States of America. Stop forcing our police department to engage in criminal acts against its American citizens, engaging in what is their most critical civic duty. Stop telling us that our Constitution ends when the park closes. Don't tell us to go home and return for our constitutional rights tomorrow morning. It's not acceptable. Thank you. Please, Marco, I'm gonna speak in support of the mayor, that show the respect that we said that we were gonna do.
Yes.
Come on out. Be respectful, please.
So all we're asking is when folks come up, to be respectful at the time, and do your best to kind of contain your emotion. We know this is a very challenging issue. We all believe very strongly in your ability to distribute and demonstrate what you wanna tell us today, but we gotta do it in a, in a civil manner, so we just ask you to, to conduct yourselves accordingly. You've done, you've done a great job in the park over the last couple of weeks, so let's continue to do it today, please.
Okay, Patrick O'Kane, and then Arda Rashid.
Mr. Mayor, city councilman, city attorney. I'm quite flustered over your belief in the city's right. I have to stop right there. The city has no rights. In fact, what I'm looking at is a fascist corporation masquerading as my government? You people gave up your right when you decided to incorporate it. You hide behind, you know, what, what do you call that stuff? Oh, indemnity clauses, where you're not responsible for what you do. Well, I kind of think you are responsible. Mr. Cohen, last week, you asked, "Where was this all going?" Well, I'm about to tell you. See, I'm a free man. Your ordinances and your statutes and your codes, they don't apply to me. Not at all. Okay, those are meant and made by corporations for corporations, and I don't work for you. Mr. Shirey, your, your first impression was, your initial response was to ban people for life from the park, if I, if I can believe what the media had to say. Why would you wanna assault the citizens of, of this city like that? And, and personally, you, you know, insult my intelligence. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I would think for, for such an action, that you're fired. Mr. Johnson, I thought you, you were the only one who didn't want Mr. Shirey to be the city manager, and I thought it was your position to actually appoint one. Madam Ashby, you too, I guess, didn't want Mr. Shirey to be the city manager. Well, I don't want Mr. Shirey to be the city manager, I don't want his policies or his thoughts to be anywhere near the city or its people. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Patrick.
Arda Rashid.
Thank you for having us, city council members. I'm gonna give, I'll be, I'll be brief, and I'll be concise. Uh, I'm gonna give a kind of global perspective, but to start off, Sacramento has, uh, over twelve-point-four percent unemployment rating, which is, uh, continuing to go up, and I think that's a major motivation for a lot of people to be here. Um, as of two thousand and eight, it was, and these facts are on the World Bank's website, as of two thousand and eight, uh, over eighty percent, uh, of the global population lives on less than ten dollars a day, which is, uh, low standard of living, uh, by any measure. Uh, a lot, a lot, a lot of people would attribute that, uh, to lack of resources or overpopulation, but in fact, the UN recently released a report that says that global food production is seventeen percent above what's necessary to feed every single human being on the planet. And these are indeed the reasons why we're here ultimately, and why this is a movement that's spreading across the entire globe. Um, so as you can see, our problems, uh, are in scope much more broad than just a camping ordinance. So with all due respect, i- if you don't have a, a solution to all of these problems that you can implement relatively quick, quickly, uh, please grant us the right, our First Amendment right, to assemble and carry out the people's duty, which is to check the established institutions if we feel that we are not being properly represented. Um, what is it, almost two minutes? By the time I'm, by the time I walk away, about, uh, twenty-eight people have died from poverty and preventable diseases.
Thanks, Arda.
Sean, and then Jeff Kravitz, and then Anthony Galardo. Is Sean Laney here?
Is Sean here? All right, Sean, thank you.
Thank you for hearing us today. Um, I'm acting, I've, I've been privileged to be, asked to be the educational chair for Occupy Sacramento, and, uh, I'm here to speak on the positive effects that Occupy Sacramento has already had on Sacramento in our less than two weeks of existence in the park across the street from here. I've seen homeless people show up and come to learn American history. I've seen homeless people come up and ask to learn new skills to come out, and, uh, something that they can go and get a job with. I've seen a homeless man, whose birthday was today, come up from being in a hopeless situation to running our entire, our entire donation collection system and our entire food system with just sheer effort and desire to be useful. We've had Sac State professors offer to come in and do teach-ins on things such as critical thinking, civics, um, civic responsibility, ethics, the things that we need to have an educated citizenship. We are woefully uneducated in both this community and throughout the United States on our civic duties, on basic economics, on how to balance our checkbooks, on how to calculate compound interest rates. The people need this education, and we really need the time to get established down here and to really set up these classes for everyone who works at any hour, including the people who work swing shift, who only can barely get here at ten-thirty or eleven o'clock at night. We have people who are volunteering to teach these classes, and we would like the right to teach those classes to the people who want to. Thank you.
Hi, Sean.
Jeff?
All right, do you have Jeff? Great.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. You know, you have to be part of the problem, or you're part of the solution. So what's the problem? Have people been marching down the street, stopping traffic? Have people been sitting in buildings, stopping people from using public buildings? Have people walked into the Wells Fargo Tower and sat in the bank, stopped the bank from operating? None of those things have happened. None of those things. Those are usually the things that happen when people are protesting, when mass arrests are being made. What's happening? People are sitting in a park. That's what they're doing. They're sitting in a park, discussing public issues. What they're doing is the solution. The problem was that for the past fifteen years, this country has warped from a society that shared values and shared government to a society dominated by a tiny elite, by one percent of the population. The problem is that thousands, thousands, excuse me, trillions of dollars have been spent on wars in other countries while our schools have been closing. The problem is that young men and women in our communities are going to prisons in record numbers while schools are closing. The problem is that college tuition has been going up so that these young people... so that these young people, when they get out of school, are literally going to be the serfs of the, of the banks who loaned them the money. The problem is that thousands of homeowners in Sacramento have had their homes foreclosed on because of speculation in the markets. The problem is that people's 401Ks and other retirement benefits have been wiped out. And the number one problem has been apathy. The number one problem is that no one has been sitting in the park protesting yet. Now they are. This is the solution. Embrace the solution. Please, be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Thank you.
All right, so that was twenty minutes that we went through and heard from ten plus speakers. What I'm going to do really quickly is if you are supporting Occupy Sacramento, can you all just stand so we can see who everybody is here? That would be everybody in the council chamber. All right, as well as a number of people outside. Okay, have a seat, thank you very much. So we're going to again, try to get through as many speakers as we can, but know that everybody in here got a chance to at least let yourselves be, be known and seen here today. So the next set of speakers, we're going to try to get through in a minute's time so we can hear from as many of you as possible.
Okay, Anthony Galardo, Kevin Carter, Cindy Sheehan.
Good evening, city council, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak on the Occupy Sacramento movement. Let me move through this quickly. I want to state my personal views on not just occupiers, but for everybody, men, women, children, race, creed, sex, religion. The history of liberty is a history of resistance. The history of liberty is a history of limitations of governmental power, not to increase it. I am free no matter what rules surround me. If I find them tolerable, I tolerate them. If I find them obnoxious, I resist them. I am free because I know that I alone am morally responsible for everything that I do. And I prefer liberty with danger than peace with slavery. History has shown a patriot must always be ready to defend his country against his government, because we now live in a world in which politics has replaced philosophy. To answer my friend's question about fear and getting arrested, I now have an answer. Courage is not the absence of fear, but rather the judgment that something else is more important than fear. And lastly, Dante's Inferno. Dante said that there is a special place reserved and held for those who do nothing in a time of moral crisis. No doubt, we are in the midst of a time of profound moral crisis, much of which our society sees as morally acceptable today, would make the citizens of sight of bliss with embarrassment. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
Kevin.
We're in a fierce urgency of now. We have love on the front line, and love on the front line is a dangerous way to live, because in the end, no one wins. If we look around the nation today and around the world, there is something going on. The people have been hoodwinked, they have been led astray. And here we are today, from Liberty City, Liberty, I mean Liberty Square, in New York City, has sent a message out here to the state of California to tell us, this is our land, and this is your land. From California to the New York Islands, from this natural liberty, which was formed in eighteen forty-nine, in the city of Sacramento that was founded in eighteen forty-nine. We stand here today to hold these truths to be self-evident, that justice must take place from here, must take place from Caesar Chavez Park. Caesar Chavez was a civil rights leader. He was a mover. It's a shame that we can take this park out here and discredit his name. Right now Caesar Chavez is turning over in his grave, but not just Caesar Chavez. So is the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. See, that's what inspired me to be here for the thirteen days. See, I don't have nothing to lose, and I don't mind going to jail, because the difference is, that's the same thing Dr. King said. And what I'm going to bring to you, Mr. Mayor, my personal friend, and I still love you. But I want you to read this. This is a letter from the Birmingham Jail. I would like for you to read this. This is very important, and you read it so that you can touch the conscience of these people here. These people are long sufferers. I lead the march out here every day, throughout this city. I work with your police department. I make sure that we coordinate. Our biggest march was Saturday, between there, between here and the banking community to the state capitol. Between your, your officers and the officers over at the state capitol. We have a great rapport with you. We're not here to disturb the city. We're not complaining, we're just explaining. That's what these signs are for. We're not complaining, we're just explaining to the rest of the city. So everybody knows what's going on, because we do, we have love on the front line. And you don't understand when I say that. That means not just the soldiers over in Afghanistan and Iraq, but right here in our communities, right here. We're a young medieval skill because we don't have enough police. It's about revenue recovery right now. It's about coming up with solutions, how we can get our city back on top. And why it's so important for us to get this done in that park? Because the rest of the state of California is bound in here. And we want to be able to greet them, coordinate with them, and make sure they don't come in here and disrupt what we have going on in our city for a solution. Because we don't know what they're doing in Oakland. They're sticking pit bulls on people and all this other stuff. LA can't get their thing together. But right here, we are the heart of California. We are surrounded by everything from civil government to federal government to state government. We are the model city, Mr. Mayor, and all of the, the people that are on this city council board. We are the model. When you look back at that sign right there, when you look back there, where this city was founded, that's the most important part right now, because this is a whole new generation. In eighteen forty-nine, in eighteen forty-eight, it was James Marshall who found gold here, from Southern Mill. And that's why everybody came to California, because of prosperity. From ten pounds to ten shovels, for their trying to find the success and the interest of their families, the security. This is where we're at today. These are those pioneers today, and you're right along with them. You are the pioneers right along with them. You can help us get where we need to get. We don't want this park for any other reason, but to do what we need to do, for our teachers to be able to get up in the morning and start educating people. That's the most important part to us. Yes, I am, I am, I am, I am. But I want to make sure that we get the point across, because we don't need to go to jail anymore. We don't need that, Mr. Mayor. We don't need that, city council members. We don't need that, Mr. Manager. We don't need that, uh, Chief of Police. We don't need that. We didn't come here for that. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Cindy Sheehan.
So I think he spoke for about fifty people. Holy moly. Mr. Carter, thank, thank you, thank, Mr. Carter, thank you.
If I spoke for fifty people, that means I speak for the, the rest of the city that wants to occupy the city, but they can't get off the work to come out here too. So, and in that case, in that case, sir, they let the rest of everybody else speak, speak. And then that fifty that I spoke for, with that fifty that I spoke for, sir, you know what I'm saying, I'll take the responsibility for that, because I speak all around this city.
It wa- it was meant to be a compliment, really, it was. Yes, ma'am, you're up. I hear you, I hear you. Yes, sir.
Is it my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Thank you for letting a foreigner speak tonight. Um, yes, I'm not from here, I'm from Vacaville. I'm Cindy Sheehan, and my son Casey was in the Army and killed in Iraq on April fourth, two thousand and four. We were told he was defending our freedoms. He was killed on April fourth, and that's the same day as Martin Luther King Jr. was killed. I've been invited to attend Occupy movements all over the country, but I chose Sacramento because it's closest to me, and I think the solutions have to be local. And I want to assure you, give you my word, for what it's worth, that Occupy Sacramento is neighborhood-friendly. And I invite you all to come over. It's just like right over there. I had to drive all the way from Vacaville. I'm sure you could walk right over there. I got arrested on Saturday night in Caesar Chavez Park. It was during a peaceful protest. The Sacramento PD called it a riot. It was the most boring and peaceful riot I have ever seen. And I'm here tonight, and I came all the way from Vacaville, because I don't believe the First Amendment to the US Constitution stops at the borders of Sacramento. This movement is growing, and it's not going to go away, no matter how much it's oppressed. So you might as well start supporting it. As a person who's been involved in many occupations around the world, most famously in Crawford, Texas, and we were allowed to stay, I urge you to allow the Occupy Sacramento movement to set up a permanent camp in Caesar Chavez Park. Obviously, the people there are respectful, they're clearly smart, they're clean, they clean up the park, they clean up the bathrooms. And they're, most of all, they're dedicated to making this world a better place, not just for them, but for you, and for your children, and for your grandchildren, if you have them, and for mine. I am so honored to just be part of this movement. And I'm glad when I came and chose Occupy Sacramento. And we're not going away. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can I, can I ask the speakers, please try to be mindful at the time? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Angie Bottomley, and I am a current resident of County Sacramento. In case you have not seen my sign, it is clear.
Can you flip it?
I don't know how this thing works.
Flip it over. Thank you.
I took off the anarchy because I was told it is a problem for homeland security. I work for, I, I have a guard car. I have been volunteering security for Occupy Sacramento, and we are willing to negotiate with the police if you just give us one night, one night to occupy the park with security volunteers. And if, if there is any corruption or chaos, we will not occupy the park twenty-four seven. Please let us occupy the park. Please reconsider. I called seven of eight of you and left you messages with your secretaries. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Angie.
Okay, Tiffany Clark, Karen Bernal, Hillary Brumley.
I prepared two minutes, so I'm going to try to go faster. But good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of the council. My name is Tiffany Clark. I'm a lawyer, thirteen-year resident of the city of Sacramento, currently District One, and an activist with the Ninety-Nine Percent Occupy Movement. I'm here to talk about how the council might meet the city's needs for keeping the peace and ensuring public safety and financial sustainability, while also meeting the citizens' needs for strong and sustained peaceful assembly and petition of our government for redress of our grievances. I do believe a win-win solution is possible. In our effort to meet our need, we have planned to either assemble at night or get arrested at night. Given this worldwide, movement-wide plan, we believe both our needs and the city's needs would be best met if the city allows our peaceful nighttime assembly in Caesar Chavez Park, conditioned upon the maintenance of the kind of commitment to peace, sanitation, security, and cooperation with the police that Occupy Sacramento has thus far demonstrated. With these conditions and Occupy Sacramento's track record, we believe the risk of high levels of policing being required to monitor our nighttime assembly is extremely low, and that allowing that assembly would be significantly less expensive than the arrest and legal costs that would only increase otherwise. In addition, with the con- with the conditional permission I described, we believe the risk of this decision setting an expensive precedent is negligible for the following reasons. This is an unprecedented movement of unprecedented urgency, scope, and size. Most movements are not so strong that their members would be willing to remain outdoors in the elements twenty-four seven. And for those movements that might be that strong going forward, they would also likely be determined enough to protest via getting arrested, in which case the same calculations I described would make the same decision we're proposing the least expensive way for the city to keep the peace and maintain public safety. Finally, to the extent there is a concern that this decision would result in large crowds of homeless people populating the park at night and accompanying additional police expense, I respectfully suggest this may be a false dilemma. Given this economy, the homeless have increased in number and fewer shelter spots are available for them at night. Whether they are in a city park at night or shuttled off onto a city sidewalk, it would be, it would seem the police effort and expense required to monitor them would be the same. In closing, if there is still concern on behalf of this body after hearing from all of us here tonight, I propose the council consider a pilot project of two weeks with reassessment after that time. Thank you so much for your time and attention to this matter.
Okay, Karen.
Good evening. There is no way for the vast majority of people to petition our government for a redress of grievances other than what we are doing across this country and now the world. We have phoned, emailed, faxed, and mailed letters. We have lobbied our representatives in the White House, and all of our concerns end up in the same landfill of contempt. Rich people are taxed less than poor people. Wars rage on as sixty-five percent of discretionary spending goes to the war machine, and social safety net programs for the average American are being shredded as they lose their workplace rights. And there is intolerable high number of children living in poverty as we continue to see our society victimized by corporate forces who put profits before people. I think you guys have all seen that. We are here in person exercising our First Amendment rights and protesting our government in a manner we've come to believe is the only way that will make a difference. As Chair of the Progressive Caucus of this state's Democratic Party, I would never tell any of my brothers and sisters protestors that they should turn away from the political process or getting involved politically, but we must face things honestly. The hour is way too late for such false talk that simply voting for a candidate or a ballot measure is going to fix things. Conventional electoral and political processes have been weighed in good conscience by our earnest participation, measured against what we as a people know to be just and found terribly, terribly wanting. We will no longer accept what is. We are practicing a new kind of politics, one that is about the imperative of taking back our democracy. Yes, I have been arrested. I have spent the night in filthy conditions in our county jail. My dau- my own daughter witnessed my arrest, as well as others, this past weekend. I want her to know that if she has to in the future, she has the power within her to stand up for what's right and not concede the moral high ground because someone told her she couldn't make a stand. We owe the people of this country and the world who are watching the affirmation through our actions that their dreams are legitimate, and that when we get together to act on our dreams, we can create a new reality. Democracy is very difficult, but let me tell you that it is worth doing, because we talk to each other, we have a voice, it's one person, one voice. No corporate persons, no financial voices. Democracy is indeed, as some have said, the worst form of government, except for all of the others.
Karen, can we get your phone back, please?
Yes. You know, when the people of Egypt occupied Tahrir Square, we cheered for them. We, we did not tell them to leave. We celebrated their exercising of democracy. They do not have a First Amendment right, but we do, and we should not have to leave our freedom square.
Hillary. Hillary.
All right, Hillary.
And then Tracy Rice Bailey, and then Matt, looks like Walver.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Hillary Brumley, and I am part of this Ninety-Nine Percent Movement. My family pays more than a quarter of our income in taxes, and we have no problem paying our share. Our problem lies with how our tax money is being spent. Our problem lies in the privatization of our government via campaign contributions and lobbying by the wealthiest one percent of our nation. Policy cannot be made fairly for all people under this system. Our government was designed to be by, of, and for the people. Not Wall Street, not the Fortune Five Hundred, not the richest one percent of all of the people, all of the people. And we, the people, have had enough, so we're dissenting. We have the absolute right to do this, to assemble and speak. It is the essence of the First Amendment. Under our Constitution, political expression in a public forum is absolutely protected, not any time except between eleven PM and five AM. This is a people's movement. Keep us out of the courts and on the streets, in the plaza, where the protest belongs. Stop spending our tax money to arrest, house, and prosecute peaceful protestors.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you for staying within the minute. Tracy, set an example, please.
I'm doing my best, but it ain't going to happen. It's going to take me more than a minute. I was arrested again Saturday night. Before I go on, I will say that we were treated decently by the police. I know the police are human and have families to beat, and I'm not mad at them for their choice of occupation, just for trying to stop this occupation. I also know that you are their bosses and can stop this extreme waste of resources. Now let me paint a picture of true, a true picture of extreme waste in a broke, bare-bones, budget, jobless, soon to be totally uneducated economy. For a few years, I've been setting in meetings where everyone is scrambling to make ends meet. I know that the budget is in dire straits. I know that we are looking to this city to help fund the winter sanctuary for our homeless men and women this year. I also know that on Sunday, October fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, we were occupying Caesar Chavez Park. Midnight came, and the police rolled up and forced. Note, there were police in and around the park- Note, there were police in and around the park all day to observe this peaceful occupation and to help things go smoothly. At midnight, the police stated that we were illegally assembling in the park, they declared it a riot zone, and almost immediately we were surrounded by police in full riot gear. Again, an office was made in the street with the use of many police vehicles, CSI vehicles, paddy wagons, police vans, you see the blatant financial waste yet? Let me go on. As before, we were approached by three officers each, one by one, while surrounded by the riot squad, nice sticks in hand, one riot officer with a drawn weapon. Other officers were filming what was happening. How intimidating to the protestors and devastating to the budget this really was. After we were read, what I will call the riot act, we were warned, where we were warned that if we went limp, the police would not pick us up or carry us in any way, rather they would first go for pressure points, then on to whatever force necessary to arrest us. Of course, when they finished with, will you please go with this officer and allow yourself to be arrested? I was more than happy to be allowed to be arrested. We were escorted to not the middle of the street as before, instead we were to stand against the wall in the alley. We were basically booked from here, and then we had a picture taken in front of the paddy wagon where they put it in. We were taken to county jail just three blocks away from where we were protesting. This time, the police did not say anything about the waste of resources, at least not where I could say. They were very nice to me, by the way, I'm extremely rheumatic and the cuts were hurting my hands and shoulders. They took off the zip cups and gave me two pairs of link cups. That was a blessing, and I totally appreciated it.
Tracy, we need your final thought, please.
Okay, we are respectfully requesting that this city pay attention to its citizens and allows to occupy Caesar Chavez Park so that we can effectively organize. Please do not be afraid of change, it is the only constant and what is necessary for the masses to survive with any quality of life. This is an issue I truly believe in, so I will be at Caesar Chavez Park tonight in solidarity with my brothers and sisters. Please do not have us arrested. I really do not want to go to jail, it's not the best place to spend the night, I do not believe this city should waste any more resources on arresting those who want to make a difference in the world they live in. Imagine if you got arrested for making a difference in your own life, how unrighteous is that? Have a nice night, please consider your decision carefully, and make the right choice for the plea for your sister. I love you, peace.
Okay, Matt Walliver, and then Joel Usery, Mark Bradley.
Good evening. My name is Matt Walliver. I am a student with loans working towards a degree in electrical engineering. I am the son of an honest, blue-collar worker, but first and foremost, I am the oldest of four brothers, one of whom is a soldier in Afghanistan. I have been homeless as a sacrifice to further my education after loans have ran out. My job at Occupy Sacramento is to get in touch with people with respectful minds so that they can teach for free what I have suffered to gain. My only asset in this world is my truck and my education. I have accepted that I have a bleak future, I am 24-years-old. Having no foreseeable future has caused me to ponder my own mortality, and this has not left me a coward. It has forced me to awaken for the protection of my species, for the continuation and the concept of brotherhood. My brothers and sisters sitting here today are all heroes. The banks and corporations have committed fraud at the expense of employees, countrymen, and the human race. They have received no punishment, and there has been no satisfactory justice. Jesus, that goes quick. I have a feeling, an emotion, that stirs within me when I wipe the justified tears away with one hand and I make a fist with the other. Its definition has eluded me until today. It is love. It is love that drives me to help those in need, and it is love that drives me to punish the wicked. It is love that I, with love that I protest, and it is with love that I hope for a future that I know is impossible on this current path. And it is with love that I hate. I hate them for what I have seen them do in my lifetime. They started the wars which puts my brothers' lives in jeopardy. They have made me lose all faith in my government. They have crushed family-owned businesses, they have monopolized media to silence the hearts of men, they have crushed the middle class, they have, they have made justice a mockery and a charade. They have poisoned the soil, they have poisoned the water, and now they are stealing my voice and enslaving us with invisible hands? A hero has risen within me, and I will not take a micro step in the opposite direction of human progress in the name of fear or blood money. I am unemployed. I have lived in poverty for so long, I have forgotten the taste of luxury.
Matt, we need your final thought.
My final thought. My final thought is that by closing this park off, you create something called positive feedback in electrical engineering. And it's like what you saw with that camera earlier today. It's when you have a signal that keeps on getting amplified and amplified, and if you cut these people's rights off for freedom of speech, you will only, you will only grow the number of homeless people. Thank you.
Joel?
We are here today to consummate our First Amendment right to address our government with grievances, grievances that are legitimate, and therefore endow us, the 99%, to demand justice and resolution. We are here today because secrets can no longer be kept from us. It is no longer a secret that the top 400 Americans control more wealth than the bottom 180 million Americans. It is no longer a secret that many of our elected representatives have been corrupted by this financial monetary injustice. We are here protesting against a system that supports corporate elitist while American citizens lose their homes and jobs. A system that perpetuates convenience at the expense of our environment. A system that perpetuates costly, archaic, barbaric acts of war on the backs of American taxpayers and courageous soldiers who risk their lives every day. We are here today because we are concerned about the future of our nation and our species. Council members, I have no doubt in my mind that you share these same concerns, so why not join us? Why not support us? Occupy Sacramento is the first committee to address a political body, a feat that symbolizes our strength as a community. Sacramento, the capital of California, has the potential to leave the West Coast and co-creating a sustainable society. Council, I leave you with a simple question. If you do not represent us, American citizens, who do you represent?
Thanks, Joel.
Mark Bradley, and then Christina K. Plum, and then Nathaniel Mills.
So Mark, Christina, Nathaniel.
My name is Mark Bradley, I'm a retired history teacher, 20-year resident of Curtis Park and a native Sacramento. As a participant and observer of the events of the last 13 days, I have to say that two aspects of those events have struck me as being almost without precedent. One is the phenomenal growth of Sacramento's 99% movement in just two weeks' time, from the first Saturday when 150 of us gathered together in Fremont Park, to the third Saturday when an estimated 600-plus people gathered together in Caesar Chavez Park to exercise their First Amendment rights to peaceably assemble and engage in free speech. But the other is this city government's asymmetrical strategy in dealing with this 99% movement. On three nights in particular, October 6th, October 8th, and October 15th, the nonviolent civil disobedience of a handful of peaceful demonstrators has been met by what can only be described as an overwhelming force of 70 to 80 police officers, most in riot gear and armed with billy clubs. Last Saturday night alone, I counted some 36 squad cars, two police vans, and two paddy wagons. All of this in the face of a tiny group of peaceful citizens who, I promise you, would have allowed themselves to be captured and detained by a single spool of thread. Let's face it, ladies and gentlemen, you're hunting quail with hand grenades. Now, either this is someone's idea of a measured response to a perceived threat, or it's nothing but political theater. If it's the former, it is seriously misguided and should be seen for the profligate waste of taxpayer dollars that it is. If it is the latter, however, I say by all means let the show go on. Numerous national polls have shown that among those folks who are aware of the 99% movement, the overwhelming majority approve of what we are doing, and with more Americans becoming aware of it with each passing day, I can only conclude that time is on our side. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Christina?
All right, Christina. All right, great. We not starting the clock, can you get here?
I apologize ahead of time, I was told to prepare a two-minute speech. Hello, Board of Directors, thank you for taking the time to address the Occupy Sacramento movement. My name is Christina K. I would like to start by saying, although we may seem like a small movement, I believe it's important to remember that this occupation is global. As of today, there are 1,554 occupations worldwide. Our constitutional First Amendment rights give us freedom of assembly, speech, and press. It saddens me that we must be here today to address what should be a birthright in this country. Additionally, there are no time restrictions on free speech or assembly. Our city seems to believe that time restriction on free speech and assembly should be permitted. I'm sure the most relevant question on the table is, why must you occupy through the night? We, like the homeless individuals in this city, have been hidden away. We have been distracted by consumption and entertainment. We need to occupy this park day and night so that this country and its officials continue to rethink about these issues, day and night, until they are resolved. We must be able to easily assemble to discuss these issues without interruption. The Constitution itself, for example, wasn't drafted only during business hours. This country's problems do not disappear at curfew, and the people in this